Hello, I'm Jay Jermaine Bay of the Valonian Moors Freedom, Monté Callarau. The acronym is ADPAC, I'm the Chief Judge of Coastal Court. Today is Class 148, Class 148. What did we learn in Class 147? Well, we're starting to get an understanding of how the Moors can get their sovereign powers back, right? The Moors have been seeking a way to uplift fallen humanity. But the term or phrase "uplift fallen humanity" never was qualified in terms of what it's a substantive law and then the procedure of law that needed to take place in order for Moors may to uplift fallen humanity. So therefore, fallen humanity should mean what? How should fallen humanity be defined? If you were to define it, right? Because it's just a slogan, because it really has no call to action because it's not defined as a mission statement, right? It's not defined in terms of, okay, what are the steps to determine how do you uplift fallen humanity? Right? And what we're starting to learn is there's a lot of people on planet Earth that have been colonized. The Africans were colonized. And since the Africans were colonized, they too were trying to do what? Uplift fallen humanity. So what did the Africans do in order to uplift fallen humanity? When they had a call to action, what'd they do? They declared their independence, right? They drafted constitutions. They started to recognize the nationality of their people through said constitutions. And they departed those constitutions with the United Nations of 1945 according to Article 102 of the Charter. And then from there, they started to enforce international law, the resolutions such as United Nations Resolution 1514 of the year 1960, that gave colonized territories, colonized people, the right to do what? With the United Nations set forth an international law regarding United Nations Resolution 1514. It was what? It was the granting of independence. For what? Colonized countries and peoples. So therefore, United Nations Resolution 1514 of 1960 recognized two legal personalities. What was the two legal personalities? It was the colonized country, that's one personality. And then it was the people, that's another legal personality. But you have to understand, the title is generic. It did not identify the name of the colonized country and it did not identify the name of the people because international law is written in a very generic way because it's one size fit all for all colonized people. Therefore, the African states and all the surrounding islands around planet Earth have been utilizing international law regarding the Charter of the United Nations, right? Articles 5, excuse me, Article 1, Section 2, Article 55, and Article 73 gave colonized people an international law right to decolonize. In addition to that, the United Nations set forth other resolutions regarding United Nations Resolution 1514, right, of 1960. And right after that, they came out with what? United Nations Resolution 1541 of 1961, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And this is what the Africans started to use to uplift fallen humanity. They use what? Substantive law and then the procedure of law, which is following the rule of law. So when we started understanding in Class 147, we started looking at what's commonly known as the Statutes of the International Court of Justice, right? That was fully ratified in the year 1946. The International Court of Justice and its statutes was established as the principal judicial organ of the United Nations, right? So through the Statutes of the International Court of Justice, we started looking at Article 38. Article 38 start to set up what? The rule that the judges were recognizing how to civilize nations such as the nations that was in Africa who wanted to uplift fallen humanity. What type of status did the African states need? First, the African states had to understand they were trying to achieve what? They trying to become what? A civilized nation according to contemporary international law. So in the Article 38 of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice, the first thing you must understand as a people who are looking to decolonize is first, you must understand and recognize international law is what sets up what? The rule of law. Right? So in Article 38, Section 1, it starts to talk about three or four main things that the Moors have to understand. The Moors want to uplift fallen humanity, then you have to follow the law in order to become a civilized nation. And what was one of the first things the Moors had to do according to Article 38 of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice? First, you have to recognize international law. Then after that is what? It's the rule of law, that was Section 8, right? So you got Section 1, Part A said it's about what? The rule of law. Then Section B start talking about what? The customs and the practice of law. And Section C talked about what? Recognizing the principles of law that's recognized by who? Civilized nations. So therefore, in order to uplift fallen humanity, first you gotta recognize that you're an uncivilized nation if in fact, you're not following international law reforms. And international law talks about there must be a rule of law, the customs of law, and then it must be what? It must be the practice of law, right? And when you practice the law, now you set up the well-set up principles that's recognized in international law amongst civilized nations. That's Article 38 of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice. And this is what Moors never understood. The Moors want to uplift fallen humanity and they never defined what does that mean? How do you put that into what's commonly known as practical application? How can you apply the phrase "uplift fallen humanity" where there's no instructions? There's no steps? So you must understand these four things that I'm about to share with you. When you start talking about uplifting fallen humanity, you must understand substantive law and study international law because international law regarding education of international law is the information we needed for our nation. Article 38 of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice started giving us the information, right, for our nation in order to become a civilized nation. So we got the proper information. Then after that, that's called a substantive law, the proper information of international law that sets up what? The application of the law. That's called the procedure. Once you understand how to apply international law, the application of law, that sets up what? The causation. The causation is the cause and effect of understanding the information, which is international law, the rule of law, the customs of law, the practice of law, and the well-set up principles of law. That's information. That's where the education comes from. ADPAC Study Session is giving information, right? Because once you have the proper information of studying international law, now you can put that into what? Application. Application sets up what? Causation. Causation creates what? Effect. So it's cause and effect. So studying with ADPAC Study Session is giving you education of the information that where you can apply, right? The proper information in order to uplift fallen humanity through what? Substantive law and procedural law. That sets up causation because it's cause and effect. And this will Moors have to understand what ADPAC Study Session is presenting to the people. It's a contracts law class on how to enforce international contracts. What happens, what's just the opposite? If you turn around and get misinformation, right? Let's talk misinformation. And then that's the application of misinformation, then the causation, right? Is counterproductive because the effect causes you to do what? Go to jail. Soon as you say you're what? Sovereign citizen, Moors American, all these different things. You trying to now apply some misinformation, it creates the causation. The cause and effect is what? You end up going to jail, losing your car, losing your house, losing your children, losing your freedom. You end up losing everything. Because you got misinformation in front of you because no one ever taught you about international law. No one told you that you have to uplift fallen humanity, get to a level regarding how all states on planet Earth recognize international law. They all play by the same rules regarding what? Decolonization. If people trying to decolonize, you have to follow the same rules as everybody else who decolonized. That's the practice of law. That's the custom, the well-set up principles that set up the fall of international law and the rule of law. What is the rule of law? The rule is what? The procedure. What steps do you need to take? And Moors never understood this. Why did Moors understand it? Well, first of all, they gonna study international law. What's the next reason why? Because they failed in what? What else did we learn in Class 147? We failed in the basic understanding of the four elements of a contract. What are the four elements of a contract? The four basic elements, basic elements. The first element is what? What's the first box? The parties must be known. The second box is what? Who's superior, who's inferior? The third box is what? What are the terms and conditions? And the fourth box is what? How to enforce the contract? Well, we as Moors, we failed at the four basic elements of a contract. Why did we fail? It's because of the misinformation that were received right on the front. We were told we were people of a misnomer called Negro, Black, Color, right? Then that went into what? Now we start calling ourselves what? Moors American, African American, et cetera. We calling ourselves Indian? And the word "Indian" was made up by the British. That's why they named India, India. It wasn't India until British named it, India. So we're not Indians. That's a misnomer. It's a Nam de Here. So what happened is we failed at the four basic elements of contract because we didn't even know the party name that's listed on the contract. And the party names is two names that recognizes us in the contract. One of the two names that's recognized in treaty is what? Empire Morocco, that's the name of the state, that's a legal personality. And what's the nationality? So the United Nations under United Nations Resolution 1514, the title of that resolution is what? The granting of independence to who? Colonized countries and people. So if you don't know the name of the colonized country and you don't know the nationality of the colonized people, then how you gonna make it enforce international law? The name of the parties in a contract must be particular. It must be precise or you can't enforce the contract. So the Moors, we, we as Moors, including myself, I started off my journey as a Moors American. For the first two and a half, nearly three years of when I first started studying, I would refer to myself as a Moors American. I started studying year 2018. So 2018, 2019, and then when I started getting into year 2020, I was still calling myself a Moors American. I didn't know no better because I was starting to study. And I was like, okay, let me just listen, let me learn. They say we Moors American, okay, I'm gonna ride with that for now, right? Because everybody kept saying, "Don't believe me, do the research." I said, "Okay, well, let me just listen, I'm gonna start doing some research." And once I started doing the research, guess what I found out? The Moors were failing at the four basic elements of a contract. Because I started reading the Moors Treaties and the Moors Treaties always kept referring to us as Moroccans. None of the Moors Treaties referred to us as Moors Americans. None of the Treaties. All the Treaties kept saying it was Morocco. None of the Treaties said it was a Mexic. None of the Treaties. So for me, I started off with misinformation. But eventually I had to study in order to get the proper information through what? Education. I had to educate myself. And this is what all the Moors have to do. You have to educate yourself. We as Moors have failed because we've been in followership and worship of so-called master teachers who are miseducating the people. For whatever reason, they're miseducating the people. So what we gotta understand in Class 147, if the Moors are serious about uplifting and falling humanity, then you must put that into what's called practical account. In order to put it into practical account, first you gotta understand you need the proper information, right, in order to raise up a nation, how do you emerge as a sovereign independent state? Well, you gotta follow the instructions of international law. You need the proper information, that way you can have a proper application. And the proper application creates causation and causation creates effect. Cause and effect. If you follow the proper instructions that the African states did, the islanders, 70% of all the islands have already been colonized. And we as Moors sit over here with the United Nations Headquarters, a stone's throw away, and we don't know nothing about international law. We don't know nothing about the Charter of the United Nations. We didn't know nothing about the Statutes of the International Court of Justice. We didn't know nothing. We didn't study international law. So what else did we start studying in Class 147? Well, we started studying all that and talking about it. Why? Because we're starting to learn why did the Moors need a constitution? But the constitution does what? The constitution starts to do what? Disclose the party names. The constitution is a unilateral contract between the nationals themselves. We, the people, recognize each other and we shake hands and say, "You know what? Let's start to govern with one single principle, full constitution, that starts to govern all of us collectively through an organized, jural society." It's a unilateral contract between we, the people. Once you have a unilateral contract commonly known as the constitution, now the constitution becomes a subject of international law. Why is the constitution a subject of international law? It's because now the constitution represents what? The state. So the state now has the ability to enter relations with other states. The constitution establishes the state. It recognizes the legal personality of the state. And then it also sets up what? The government. It has a defined territory and after that it gives you what? The ability to enter into relations with other states. Because we, the people, which is the population who are sitting in the seats of government, now have a right to get into relations with other foreign states. What else the constitution allow you to do? It allows you now to be recognized as the competent authority of your state. Having three branches of government allows you now to ratify, recognize, and accede to international law reforms. Your state allows you to become parties to treaties. No one can become a party to a treaty. Only a state as a legal personality can become a party to a treaty, a signatory power. No individual Moor can enforce a treaty. Treaties are not self-executing. You need a state that now recognizes the competent authority, the competent authorities such as the consul general of your state, the ambassador of the state, prime minister of the state, the Sultan of the state. Whoever's the competent authority of the state can go and enforce the provisions of that treaty. There's very few articles in a treaty that are actually self-executing. The reality is 90% of all treaties, the language in it can only be enforceable by the competent authority of the state, the government officials themselves on behalf of the people. So in order for us to be able to enforce the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, our state had to be a party to it. Well, up until 1956, the Empire Morocco was able to enforce the treaties. But after 1956, Mohammed V stepped down from Sultan, down and becoming king. And in 1956, France was running around acting like a de facto Sultan and France turned around and took their name off the Treaty of Affairs of 1912. And France no longer had sovereign authority to go around planet Earth as a sovereign on behalf of the Empire Morocco. Up to 1956, none of the Moors could enforce any of the treaties because the only people that can enforce the treaties is the state's officials. What's the name of the state? That's the question. It's the Empire Morocco. None of the Moors recognized the Empire Morocco because the Empire Morocco was in petition by the Moors to pledge allegiance to the Empire Morocco. The Moors were taught to go and join a temple. The Moors wasn't taught that they had to recognize the national state, which is the Empire Morocco. However, the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15, told the Moors specific instructions. So therefore, within the Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, which is substantive law because it's a treaty, it has standing in law, it also set up the rule. What was the rule? What was the procedure the Moors had to follow? It says, "Any subject of Morocco that's been naturalized in a foreign country has to return to Morocco and do what next? And then choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire." It didn't say submit to the laws of a church? It didn't say submit to the laws of a temple? But that's exactly what the Moors did. Didn't it say submit to some e-commerce website such as RVay Publications? No. The Moors have been absolutely misinfluenced. We've been mislaid. We've been hoodwinked, bamboozled, and led astray. We're misinformed and uninformed. This is why we were never, ever presented with the Treaty of Madrid. The Moors never shared it with each other. They never shared the Act of Outsetters with each other. And then they never talked about it. Someone was blocking the information. Someone was creating a detour to keep us from having access to our own Moors Treaties. If we knew about the Treaty of Madrid and the Act of Outsetters of 1906, we could have started decolonizing years ago, decades ago. But someone blocked the flow of information. And they detoured us right to where? A church coming on the temple. Or they detoured us where? To some civic organization. Neither one of them is a state and neither one of them, certainly not the Empire Morocco, is a national state. The treaty is specific. Treaty of Madrid, Article 15, Paragraph 1, said, "You must choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire." And we as Moors never did that. So how is we gonna uplift fallen humanity and we didn't even follow the instructions? So that's what we learned in Class 147, is how do we follow the instructions? Well, first, we had to understand the four elements of a contract and we had to understand that the International Court of Justice, Article 38, said, "If you want to be a civilized nation, then you gotta understand international law, the rule of law, the customs of law, right? And the practice of law, and the well-set up principles of law." And we as Moors never understood that. So ADPAC Study Session is now trying to present that to the people. This is a contracts law class. But then you have to understand, okay, who are you in the contract? That's where the four elements of contract comes in. Other than that, a contracts law class is irrelevant. It has no purpose if you don't even know who you are, all right? So that's what we gotta learn, that's what we take away from Class 147, all right? So as the Moors know, I always open up the constitution right here. It's the Constitution for ADPAC, the acronym ADPAC. This is what you call an internal state constitution. All the Moors need an in-internal state constitution for their territory. Therefore, if you trying to uplift fallen humanity, you have to learn how to decolonize a territory such as a territory called Utah. Utah is a territory. So the Moors need an internal constitution for that territory, right? And then an internal constitution such as ADPAC as an example, then it comes under the umbrella, right, of the Empire Morocco's constitution. Because the Empire Morocco's constitution is the external state. So you got the external state, Empire Morocco, and then underneath that is what? The internal state such as ADPAC as an example. But the Treaty of Madrid, the multilateral Treaty of Madrid of 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, said what? So we got returned to what? The Empire of Morocco, that is the mother state. And then the mother state does what? It grants, it grants a limited power, a limited authority, a limited sovereignty to the internal state down here. That way, the internal state can also operate with a limited sovereignty to allow Moors to return to the internal state on behalf of the Empire Morocco state. Because all politics is local. So both the mother state, the external state, and the internal state, they work together. They work in harmony, you see? And that's what we gotta understand. So as we start to return to Empire Morocco, we start to return through the internal states. All the Moors have come through an internal state in each of the territories. And the internal state, like I said, is gonna be granted certain powers of sovereignty to recognize Moors that's coming in. You just gotta see what I'm saying, right? On behalf of who? The Empire Morocco. Well, who said that for the Empire Morocco? Who, who at the Empire Morocco level gets to say what the internal states have in terms of rights? Well, that would be the government of the Empire Morocco, right? So the Moors have to learn what? Now, you need a constitution for the Empire Morocco, right? That's what I got up here. The constitution, that's the cover page, starts to recognize the government, right? So the government now has to be set up with what's the name of the state? Empire Morocco, which is the external sovereign independent state. Then we have to do what? We have to reinstate a Sultan who's head of state. The Sultan is head of state, right? So then the Sultan starts to now assist in establishing the three branches of government, which is executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch of the empire. And then the empire starts to enact laws and policies that gives the internal states, because that's the external state, that's the mother state, starts to now give rights to who? Who's it give rights to? It gives rights to the internal states. That's down here, great, you see? So the power trickles down to the internal states. From the external state down to the internal state. That's what Moors gotta understand, all right? And that's what we needed to put the Empire Morocco back in the status of governing again. We had to learn how to govern again, all right? Okay, listen. I got this word up here called repatriation. When you establish a constitution, it gives the Moors, the naturalized Moors, the colonized Moors a chance to do what? To repatriate back to the state. What state? The Empire Morocco. That's your mother. That's your mother, your biological mother. So you're leaving your adopted mother and you're repatriating back to your own mother state. All right? No definition?
Repatriation is a noun. The return of someone to their own country.
Reading it.
Repatriation is a noun. The return of someone to their own country.
Exactly, okay. So in order to repatriate, who are you repatriating back to? Okay? Now you gotta understand, you're repatriating back to what? Empire Morocco. Wasn't that the instructions of Treaty of Madrid, 1880, Article 15, Paragraph 1, said return back to who? Morocco, right? Isn't that the instructions? Right? Isn't that the instructions? Then the instructions continue to stay in Article fifteen, paragraph one. It said, "Choose between what? The entire submission to what? The empire." You see? Let's read it for the record. Listen, let's read it for the record. Right, as the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, dated July third, right, eighteen eighty. Let's come on down. We're gonna go to Article fifteen, right, just for the record. For the record, we gotta, we gotta see this. Right, gotta understand, what was the obligations of the Moors? The Moors kept saying they wanted uplift fallen humanity. Okay, that means you have to understand substantive law and then the procedure of law. This is substantive law, the reading. And it also gave you the procedure of law. Right? Okay, uh, Brother Joseph from the top.
Right of Protection in Morocco, July third, eighteen eighty, Article fifteen. "Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco shall, after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restrictions."
Alright, so therefore, Article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, paragraph one says that the Moors had to choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire. You see that? But the empire of what? The empire of what? The empire of what? Morocco. Morocco. So it's the empire of Morocco. But what is it that we actually have to do? We're now trying to return to Morocco. Who we got? Who do we have to talk to? Who are we pledging our allegiance to? We're pledging our allegiance to what? The state, which is Morocco. But Morocco happens to be an empire, but you have to talk to who? The government. It's the human beings that sit in the seats of the government of the Empire of Morocco. Because it's the government that set up what? The laws. The government sets up the laws, the laws that allows the Moors to be able to come back to the empire. The Moors were in the absence of any laws to come back to the empire after nineteen fifty-six, because the Empire Morocco was void of a government. So how are the Moors gonna come back? Where there's no government, they can have an opportunity to recognize you. How is you gonna come back to your biological mother when there was no one there to speak on behalf of your biological mother, which was Morocco? There was no government after nineteen fifty-six. So we as Moors have to do what? We have to emerge as a sovereign independent state, right? Now listen. So we have to do what? We have to draft a constitution. Right? And then put it into full force and effect. But we also need it, this is the national constitution for the parent state, for the empire, right? Article fifteen, the Treaty of Madrid says we have to do what? Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. But what about the empire? The empire of what? Of Morocco. That's too easy, right? But listen. So on the repatriation, re, re means do what? To return, to go backwards. So we have to return back to our original status as Moors, i.e. Moroccans, right? This is what we gotta understand. Right, so, like, take for instance, uh, today, I'm recording this class today. What is today's day? Today is July fourth, twenty twenty-four. And on this day, the United States of America and the United States, and the several Union States are celebrating what? Independence Day. They are celebrating independence because they, every year, they recognize their independence every year on Fourth of July. Why? What is, why is Fourth of July so important to the United States, federal government, and the several Union States? Because it's about this word right here. Patriarch. Americans and all other nationals on planet Earth are patriots of their state. They're patriots of their country. So when they declared their independence, they were trying to do what? They were trying to create, create patriotism of their own state called the United States of America. So United thirteen states came together. And through those thirteen states, they declared their independence from who? Great Britain. And now, all the way up into the year twenty twenty-four, they're still talking about their independence because it's a day of what? Patriotism. That's why they drive around with all their flags. It's a flag day, right? To remind themselves they're patriots to the nation called the United States of America. And the flag represents the state. And it represents the people, and the people are patriots of their country called the United States of America. So it's a day of patriotism. They're showing love and respect for their state, their mother state. They're celebrating their mother state, and they're celebrating the patriotism amongst themselves. Okay. What do Moors learn from this? How are we ever going to celebrate the Empire Morocco if we don't re, repatriate back to our old mother? Because the United States of America, as an example, according to the multilateral treaties such as the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, the United States of America was given a treaty right to naturalize the Moors. So therefore, once the Moors were naturalized, the Moors became what? A recognized citizen. They became an American of the United States of America. Under thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth amendment, right, as well as the Legislative Act, coming on as the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. And the Sultan of Morocco turned around through the Treaty, through the Treaty of Madrid. He recognized the Moors being what? Naturalized. So the Moors came under what? They came under, they became, now, they had to recognize patriotism of the United States of America because the Moors became adopted and now was called Americans. The Moors became Americans because of treaty rights. Right? As an example, the Moors became Canadians. The Moors became British. The Moors became Frenchmen. The Moors became Germans. You name it. That's what happened to the Moors. They got adopted. Okay, but the Treaty of Madrid gave the colonies a right to naturalize the Moors, i.e. adopters. But the treaty also set up what in Article fifteen? An open adoption for the Moors to repatriate. Re, re, re means to go backwards to return, right? To be patriots of our own mother land, mother state, mother flag, et cetera. So let's take a moment and talk about repatriation, right? Let's take to the board. Right before we continue on with the other materials I have. What do I have up here as, as a title? Repatriation destroys colonization. Let me say that again. Re, re, repatriation destroys colonization all by itself. When you say uplift fallen humanity, what you're saying is you're trying to do what? It's about repatriation because you're trying to do what? Destroy colonization. That's what uplift fallen humanity is all about. But you have to become what? According to the statutes of the International Court of Justice of nineteen forty-six, Article thirty-eight says you have to now recognize the rules, the customs, and the practice, and the principles of what? International law and the rule of law. If you want to decolonize, you want to destroy colonialism, you gotta repatriate. So the Charter of the United Nations gave the Moors a charter right to repatriate back to their state. United Nations Resolution fifteen fourteen of nineteen sixty, the United Nations turned around and told the Moors, uh, "We're gonna grant you independence of what? Two legal personalities." What are two legal personalities in the title? It says the granting of independence to who? The colonized country and people. That's two different legal personalities. But the United Nations weren't gonna turn around and tell you what your name or your state is. They weren't gonna turn around and tell you the nationality of your people. That was on us to determine that, under self-determination. Self-determination. But that wasn't difficult to do because it was already set forth in what? The treaties. The very treaties that our so-called master teachers hid from us. You understand what I'm saying? So, okay, let's break this down before we continue on. I got three different columns, right? Three different columns. One, two, three. And this column is about the Empire Morocco. And this column is about the Twilight Zone. I'll make sense of that in a moment. And this column right here is about the United States of America. The United States of America is your adopted mother. She adopted you under naturalization. The Empire Morocco is your who? Your biological mother. That you're supposed to repatriate back to. And here's the Twilight Zone right in the middle. What's the definition of Twilight Zone? Okay, just a moment. Alright, Brother Joseph?
Twilight Zone, noun. One, an area just beyond ordinary legal and ethical limits. Two, a world of fantasy or illusion.
Read it again.
Twilight Zone, noun. One, an area just beyond ordinary legal and ethical limits. Two, a world of fantasy or illusion.
Okay. So Twilight Zone. It's a what? It says what? It says, "An area just beyond ordinary legal and ethical limits." So in other words, it's outside of legal limits. It's in a Twilight Zone. It's in a gray area. And it has no what? Legal enforcement. It's outside of legal status. Let's read it again. "An area just beyond ordinary legal and ethical limits." So it's beyond it. So anybody's in a Twilight Zone is beyond legal limits. You're a no man's land. You walking around in the desert. So we're gonna break these three columns down because Moors gotta understand this before we continue on. What's happening over here in box number one? Okay, keep in mind, the title is what? Repatriation destroys colonization. Because in order to repatriation, what are we doing? We're following substantive law and the procedure of law of a Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, paragraph one says, "You gotta return to Morocco and choose between the entire submission to the laws of the empire of Morocco." That's repatriation. To return. Listen. You gotta return, right? See right there? Says you, you have to return, return to Morocco. It's Article fifteen, paragraph, says you have to re, re, re. Let me get out the way. You shall re, 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 return to Morocco. Re, 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 return. Re, re, return, which means you have to repatriate back to the state. So when you repatriate, that destroys colonization all by itself. By following substantive law and the procedure of law, the rule of law. Moors haven't been following the instructions. Okay, let's talk about it. We got one, two, three different columns. Let's break it down. Okay, column number one is about what? The biological mother state. Who's the biological mother state? We're talking repatriation. You're repatriating back to who? Your biological mother state. What's the name of the biological mother state? Empire of Morocco. Isn't that what it says in Article fifteen? We're following the instructions of substantive law. Right? That's what it says, okay? But what is the legal personality of the Empire Morocco? It's what? An external state. Because it's a mother state because it's what? It is what? An empire. This word empire, we learned out in class one forty-seven, empire means what? An extensive group of states or countries under a single sovereign authority. Then it went on to say, and recognize who the authority was, the emperor. So it's both the emperor and the state are one. The head of state, which is Sultan, is one. The head of state and the state itself becomes one. So when you say Sultan, that's like saying the Empire Morocco. When you say Empire Morocco, that's like saying Sultan. They're one. So therefore, the Empire Morocco is the external state over all other states and countries within the Empire Morocco. What else? What else do the Moors need in order to repatriate? How are you gonna repatriate if there's no government? That's what it says right here. It says, "You gotta repatriate to what? The government." So we have to establish what? The Constitution. The Constitution recognizes the state, which is Empire Morocco. It recognizes the nationality of Moroccan for the people. And then what? We have to establish what the government? The Moorish government. Because that's what it says in the Act of Outstairs of nineteen oh six. The Sultan commissioned the Moorish government to have sovereignty. Right? And then what? And the national flag of the empire. So we need a national flag for the mother. Right? National flag for the Empire Morocco for who? Moors. Keep in mind, keep in mind the word Moor is an abbreviation of what? Moroccan. That's why I got M-O-R underlined for Moroccan. On the Moors, I got M-O-O-R, right? M-O-O-R underlined. Then over here, the word Morocco, I got M-O-R underlined. And then over here for Moor, M-O-O-R underlined. All of these things are equivalent. Can someone tell me how the hell you get American out of all that? M-O-R, 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 M-O-R. Can you tell me how the hell you got American out of that? This is foolishness. Okay, let's talk about the United States of America. The United States of America is the adopted mother state. Right? Adopted under what? The United States of America naturalized the Moors. That means the, the United States of America, as an example, is one of the signatory powers to a multilateral treaty coming on as the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty. So in Article fifteen, it gave the Sultan consented and agreed through that multilateral treaty, a treaty supreme law to land. The Sultan gave the United States of America a right to do what? To naturalize the Moors, which is commonly called adoption. So now, the United States of America became the adopted mother state of the United States of America for the Moors. The United States of America as a legal personality is an external state. It's external because the United States of America is the mother state, national state, with the national stars and stripes flag. And all underneath it has fifty-plus internal states. So the United States of America is the external state. And this is why on the Fourth of July, they only fly the external state flag. On the Fourth of July, the fifty Union States don't fly their internal flag. They, everybody, as they call themselves Americans, fly the United States of America stars and stripes. It's a national flag of the external state, the parent state. So the United States of America, right, has a constitution. And their constitution was deposited with the Sultan of the Empire Morocco on December first, seventeen eighty-nine. For who? Americans. So the constitution established what? The state called the United States of America. The United States of America is the name of the state. That's the name of the state. What's the name of the people down here? Americans. This is what Sidi Mohammed recognized of who are the Americans. You know why Sidi Mohammed recognized the thirteen colonies and the people as Americans? Because Sidi Mohammed already knew who the dang old Moors are. He knew Moors were what? He knew Moors were what? Moroccans. So in the treaty, it has two legal personalities. It's United States of America and Empire Morocco. And Empire Morocco has Moroccans. And United States of America has Americans. Two legal personalities, recognized in constitutions and treaties. Okay, let's talk about this middle section. We gotta go into this. I know Moors are sensitive, but we gotta tell the truth. Let's get in. This is called what? The Twilight Zone. This is the Twilight Zone. We looked up the definition of Twilight Zone. What does Twilight Zone mean again? Let's read it again.
Twilight Zone, noun. One, an area just beyond ordinary legal and ethical limits. Two, a world of fantasy or illusion.
Okay, let's talk about it. Okay. Twilight Zone is what? Is a motherless nation of stateless people. It's a motherless nation because ain't no state. That's what makes it the Twilight Zone. You went into a stateless status, which means you're not recognizing a mother state. Listen. A motherless nation of stateless people have what? No legal personality in law. Because there's no name of the state. So therefore, you're stateless because there's no state. If there's no state, there's no people. There's no people, there's no state. The two act as one. So the Twilight Zone, already you went into a status where there is no nation that recognizes you. There's no mother constitution and nation that recognizes you as one of his own. What else? Who qualifies to be in the Twilight Zone? Okay, Moorish Americans, who think they're in a maxim. So the Twilight Zone, Moorish Americans, who keep saying they're a maxim, but a maxim is the Twilight Zone. Because there's no such thing as a maxim as a state. The word maxim, you can't even find that in a dictionary, much less in a treaty. There's no international correspondence between any states on planet Earth that talk about the word a maxim. The Moors made that up. So therefore, the Moors found themselves in the Twilight Zone because first of all, there is no state called a maxim. There are no legal personality called a maxim as a state. And there's also no such thing as Moorish Americans. The Moorish Americans is an adjective. It's a compound adjective when you look it up. That's with the hyphen. You see that hyphen right there? That hyphen represents what? A compound adjective. When you title those two words, you have to create a compound adjective. So therefore, Moorish America in a maxim has no what? No legal personality in law. It's not recognized because it's in a Twilight Zone because there's no mother nation called Moorish America. There's no Moorish America nowhere on planet Earth. Tell me the name of the state. Tell me where it's defined, where it's Moorish America. I can find it on the map. It don't exist. So what happens when you're in a Twilight Zone? Keep in mind, what's the definition of Twilight Zone, Brother Joseph?
Twilight Zone, noun. One, an area just beyond ordinary legal and ethical limits. Two, a world of fantasy or illusion.
Okay. So down here, when you're part of a Twilight Zone, you're in a motherless nation of stateless people that have no legal personality in law because you calling yourself Moorish American and you say you're in a maxim and none of that exists. That means now you have no standing in law. The reason why you have no standing in law is because you have no legal personality in law. There's no country called a maxim. There's no people called Moorish American nowhere in a treaty, nowhere in international correspondence. And all that does what? Now what happens? When you're in a Twilight Zone, all that adds up to what? No legal argument. So all the Moors keep going to these county courts, all these districts, municipal districts, trying to fight as if they're Moorish Americans. And they have no legal argument because they can't even prove that a maxim exists. They can't prove that Moorish America is recognized as a state. It's not a nationality. It's an adjective and not a noun. And they have no mother state. Everybody's stateless. Therefore, they call the Moors in this Twilight Zone what? Sovereign citizen. What does sovereign citizen mean? What does sovereign mean? Sovereign means what? The state, the nation, right? Only, who can be sovereign? Only the state. The state extends sovereignty to the people because the people extended the sovereignty through the constitution to recognize the state. They come under a constitution that sets up the principle of law on behalf of we, the people. So their people put all the sovereignty into the state. So therefore, if you're stateless, right? That means no constitution, no state recognizes you. So all this time, the Moorish Americans had no legal argument in anybody's court on planet Earth. Because the reality is, I called this the Twilight Zone, but the reality is what? Moorish Americans, right? Moorish Americans, Moorish Americans are really under what jurisdiction? They are under the jurisdiction of what? The United States of America. That's the jurisdiction of the Moors. They think they're in a Twilight Zone. They'll tell you, "Oh, United States of America don't have jurisdiction over me." When you say that, you're saying the United States of America's laws, its state laws, do not govern over you. So therefore, you mean you went to a sovereign citizen status because you went into a stateless status because you said nobody's laws governs you. Because you saying you sovereign all by yourself. You think you're the government, the legislative branch, and the judicial branch all rolled up in one, all by yourself. You're in the Twilight Zone. You're beyond legal standing in law. So the reality is Moorish Americans are really just in the jurisdiction of United States of America. Because the treaties with the supreme law of land said that the Moors could be adopted. The Sultan signed the contract. And the Moors say, "Okay, well, we trying to get underneath this mother because she's abusing us as Moors." Let's keep it real. What the people are saying is our adopted mother is abusing her authority over us. So what we're doing is we're running away from her house rules and we just run out in the middle of the street telling them, "I'm packing my stuff, I'm out of here." And you ain't got nowhere to go. That's why the story of Moses. Moses allegedly left Egypt and he went where? Into the desert. You don't understand that story. That means he, he didn't go from one state into another. He went from the state of Egypt into what? No man's land, which was the desert. And he walked around for forty days and forty nights, right? And the people almost started like Moses is trying to kill us because they went into what? Twilight Zone. Beyond the legal realms, they went into the desert. That's the Twilight Zone.
Forty years.
Forty years, forty nights, right? Forty years, forty, something like that, forty something.
Too, too long.
Too damn long. They were stuck in the Twilight Zone, right? So in that equation, they left Egypt and went into a Twilight Zone in the desert and walked around in circles. Because they had to do what? They had to either establish a state or re-emerge as a state. Either a new state or you're re-emerging as an old ancient state. You see what I'm saying? So they had to turn around and repatriate back to their state but Moses took them in the desert. And all the Grand Sheiks taking the Moors into the desert and walking around in circles. Twilight Zone, beyond legal personality, right? It's beyond, beyond, it's beyond a legal personality, right? It's beyond, beyond a legal personality. You became stateless. But the reality is, you're not stateless because the United States of America still got a legal claim to all the Moors who failed to follow the instructions of the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one. So therefore, I'm talking to the Moorish Americans right now. Let's go back to the treaty. Here, Brother Joseph, what does paragraph two say?
Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restriction.
So therefore, under paragraph two, it's that if the Moors fail to follow the substantive law of paragraph one and they fail to follow the procedure law of paragraph one, then automatically Article fifteen, paragraph two keeps the Moors naturalized. So all the Moors are really still coming under the jurisdiction of their adopted mother. And this is why they go to jail. This is why they end up in the municipal courts. All of them got warrants, they're homeless. Because they're still fighting as if they're no longer in their adopted mother's jurisdiction. They say they in the Twilight Zone and that ain't true. You're still over here because you didn't follow the instructions of substantive law and procedure law. You didn't understand how to uplift fallen humanity. What does fallen humanity means? That we failed into the jurisdiction of the United States of America as an example. And what do we have to do? What are the instructions told to do? It says you have to do what? Since you're adopted, you have to do what? You have to return, right? You have to return to what? The Empire of Morocco. You have to return to the Empire Morocco, which is what? Repatriation. And repatriation destroys colonization automatically because you're getting out of their jurisdiction. You keep begging him to do something for you and the treaty said you're supposed to do something for yourself. It gave you specific instructions to return after being adopted and naturalized. You're supposed to repatriate and become a patriot of your own biological state. The Moors never understood this. So the Moors down here, okay? Let's talk, let's talk about this last box. When you repatriate back to your state, now you're in a proper legal personality. Right? If you're in a Twilight Zone, because you say, "Oh, United States don't have jurisdiction over me." You're in a Twilight Zone, which is what? Fraud. Because there's no legal standing in what you're doing. This is why when you go to that court or don't show up, you lose. You go there and lose. And if you don't show up, you lose because they issue a warrant. And they still drag your behind in front of them anyway. Because you been getting misinformation. And now you got the application of misinformation that creates a cause and effect. Because you in a Twilight Zone. If you take your behind back on the United States of America because you're still adopted and you just abided by the laws of the United States of America, you most likely wouldn't get in no trouble. However, since the Moors know that the United States of America is abusing their authority over us as a people, then you have to follow the instructions to repatriate back to the state because the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one said you have to return. You have a treaty right to do that. Just not some arbitrary right. You have a right to self-determination. But what are the Moors doing? They trying to leave their adopted mother and they going where? Right over here, Twilight Zone. They going to the Twilight Zone right there. That's where they going to. They're taking a shortcut because the Grand Sheiks is making money off of them. Grand Sheiks is selling them all kind of fictitious fraud, fraudulent paperwork. You go over to RDB Publications, they tell you, "Oh, you gotta send us twenty-five notes so we can put a seal on your paperwork so you can have a nationality card." Really? Then tell me the name of the state. Is it called Moorish America? No. Is the nationality Moorish American? No, you can't even find Moorish American in a dictionary. No trees and no international correspondence whatsoever. The Moors at some point got to realize that we have been lied to. We've been deceived. I can prove it every day of the week. That everything the Moorish American teaches, the Grand Sheiks of both the temple and the civic Moors is teaching, nothing but fraud. This is why they don't challenge me. Because in order to challenge me, J Bay, they would have to challenge what? The information. And the information and the application and the causation and effect. And they don't want to challenge the information because they know what? If they step up to try to challenge this information, guess what's gonna happen to these Grand Sheiks? They gonna get exposed. They know I'm gonna do what? I'm gonna do what? I'm gonna destroy anything they put on the table. Anything they put on the table, I will destroy it and they know it. But what is it that I'm really destroying? Why is it they never challenged this information? I.e., never challenged me. Because they don't want me to expose them because exposure does what? It stops that cash out. People ain't gonna keep paying those administration fees to walk through the door to see your face no more. These Moorish Americans run around charging people twenty dollars at the door, a hundred and twenty-five dollars at the door, a hundred and seventy-five dollars at the door. See, they making money. And then you walk through the door, they start selling you bean pies and books. They say, "Oh, you wanna buy a book? Because all the knowledge is in this book, brother." That's a bean pie. Moorish Americans selling bean pies under the guise of a book. Talking about their scholars. Scholars are what? You're in the Twilight Zone. It's all fraud. All the Moorish American books should be listed in the library under what?
Fraud.
Fraud, i.e. fiction. Fiction. And they know it too. So they know if they step up to try to challenge backpack study sessions information, they know that I, especially me, they put me on a panel. They know I'm gonna destroy them. What does destroy mean? That mean I'm gonna destroy their cash out. They making too much money off the ignorance of the people. The Moors are so ignorant because they ain't been taught by their teachers. You trying to challenge the teacher, the so-called master teacher. You trying to share some information about international law? Watch they tell you to get out their face. Because soon as you start telling them international law, you're affecting what? Their pockets. The cash app, the tithing, right?
To the church.
And they don't want their money to stop. But they'll tell you, "Oh, ain't no such thing as money." But they keep telling you to donate. Donate what? You giving them gold and silver coin? No. You sending them Benjamin Frankels. I guarantee you, when you go to the House of Reawakening Minds and pay at the door, ain't nobody giving Dr. G no gold and silver coin. They giving her what? Benjamins, right? They giving them Jeffersons. They giving them Greenbacks. That's what they collecting at the door. You know why? Dr. G and Toshlee Bay, they can't take that silver and golden coin over to Walmart or the grocery store, the gas station. It don't spin. So they collecting so-called Federal Reserve notes at the door. Why telling you it ain't money? But they want donations. Nah, you want an entry fee. Stop calling it donation. It's an entry fee. Can't understand what's happening here. So the Moors don't understand. And I know the Moors are sensitive, right? Moors are sensitive, but I gotta tell you the truth. And sometimes the truth is messy and you just gotta tell it like it is and let people just absorb it and process it. And after that, you gotta make your own choice. I'll remind the Moors again, you know why this, this provision of the Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty, Article fifteen, paragraph one? You know it says, "You must choose." It, it put the onus on the Moor. It put the onus directly on the Moor. It says, "The subject of Morocco," singular subject, it say subjects. It says, "Subject of Morocco has to choose." And a lot of Moors are choosing either stay in the jurisdiction of United States of America intentionally because they think they Negro blacks and colors. And then the Moorish Americans are in the Twilight Zone thinking they got out of the jurisdiction, but they didn't, right? And not understand, they gotta choose between this legal personality of the United States of America and this legal personality, Empire Morocco. You're choosing between these two legal personalities. This right here is not a legal personality. You talking about you Moorish American is not a legal personality. It has no standing in law whatsoever. So what Moors gotta understand is fraud. This is why you keep losing. And you turn around, "Oh, man, a white man this, a white man that." Nah, 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 nah. The colonists knows he's a colonist, but he also knows the Sultan gave him permission to adopt you. So it's half of our fault is Moors because we didn't study international law and we didn't study our treaties to understand we had to return to Morocco. We had a treaty right ourselves. We, we as a people have a right to do it. Stop blaming the white man. When the white man signed the Treaty of Madrid, he agreed that the Moors could go home whenever they wanted. So what, what, what did the colonists do? He blocked the information by putting overseers, deceiving candies, and as the overseers, the middleman to distract us away from the truth of how to get home. This is what you gotta understand. Alright, so in other, in other words, repatriation destroys colonization. What should be the order of the day for Moors? Decolonization is the order of the day. I'll say it again, decolonization is the order of the day. Moors keep saying nationality is the order of the day. Well, if you don't know your nationality, then you can't decolonize. So decolonization is the order of the day. Why do I say decolonization? Because you're trying to do what? You're trying to make what? A legal argument. How do you repatriate? Well, you gotta make a legal argument. How do you establish a legal argument? What's about your state of facts? What's the facts about your state? If you're trying to decolonize, because you repatriated back to your state, now you can make a proper legal argument. Because the party must be known. You gotta get out the twilight zone, and you gotta get out of jurisdiction of the United States of America about following the instructions. That's what Moors gotta understand. Listen. What were the Moors supposed to do? This is Treaty Affairs nineteen twelve, that was dissolved in nineteen fifty-six. Why do we keep reading it? Because we gotta go backwards and learn, what did the Sultan want France to do in nineteen twelve? Because keep in mind, France is operating off of what? What, what, what is France operating off of? They're operating off of this. Right? This multilateral treaty called the General Act, right, of the International Conference of Al-Dosaras of April seventh nineteen oh six, the Act of Al-Dosaras of nineteen oh six, was mandated for the Moors to be the governing authority along with the Sultan. Nineteen oh six. So five years later, in nineteen twelve, since they didn't wake up the Moors, what happened? Well, the Moors ended up now still being asleep, and France took over in nineteen twelve, and the Sultan said, "You know what? I want to create a civilized nation." I want to create a civilized nation. This is what the Sultan said in nineteen oh six through the Act of Al-Dosaras. In order to create a civilized nation, he had to put the Moors back in charge, so the Moors can set up governments all over the Empire Morocco. The Moors were the absence of having Moors governments in each of the territories throughout the Empire Morocco. The Act of Al-Dosaras started to put the Moors back into every city and district all over again. This is what the Act of Al-Dosaras mandated. Okay, let's go to it real quick. Before we read the Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve, let's go to the Act of Al-Dosaras of nineteen oh six, okay? We're gonna go down to Article sixty. Okay, now we're in Article sixty. Okay, okay, Nova, Article sixty, but before you start reading Nova, listen, Moors. What is Article sixty about? Why are we going to Article sixty? Well, first of all, it's talking about how the Sultan's putting together what? The administration and the judicial branch. Who's overseeing the administration and judicial branch? The Moors government. So in Article sixty, in its last paragraph, it's gonna tell you that the Sultan, one of the administration, which is the government, Moors government, and the Moors judges in each of the cities and districts throughout the Empire Morocco. Keep in mind, this treaty is about the Empire Morocco, which is vast. Nova, Article sixty.
Article sixty. In accordance with the right granted by Article eleven of the Madrid Convention, foreigners shall have the right to acquire property throughout the Sharifian Empire, and His Majesty the Sultan shall issue to his administrative and judicial officers such instructions as may be necessary for them not to refuse the registration of deeds without lawful cause. Subsequent transfers either by deeds between living parties or by death shall continue without hindrance.
Okay, so we're gonna jump down, skip some paragraphs. We're gonna go down to the last paragraph, okay? Alright, last paragraph. Nova.
The Mothsan shall designate in each city and district specified in this article, the Khadi, who shall have charge of such verification.
So in the last paragraph, remember in the first paragraph, the Sultan, His Majesty, was setting up what? The administration and the judicial. What is administration? That's the government, Moors government. What is judicial? That's consul court. So the last paragraph of Article sixty, reads as follows. The Mothsan, what's the Mothsan? That's the Moors government. So the Moors government shall designate in each city and each district specified in this article, the Khadi, which is the judge, who shall have charge of such verification. So therefore, Article sixty, in its last paragraph, it said the Moors are supposed to set up governments in what? In each city and each district. You see that? Of the Empire of Morocco. So the Moors supposed to be setting up governments everywhere. This is what Moors gotta understand. They put us back into power in nineteen oh six. Decolonization was supposed to start in nineteen oh six. The Moors already were granted the powers to decolonize as a people, and the state itself was getting its sovereign powers to be recognized by the European states again. So the Act of Al-Dosaras was reaffirming the sovereignty of the Sultan and the Empire Morocco that have jurisdiction over all European states. And the Sultan in the Act of Al-Dosaras put the Moors government in charge. So in nineteen oh six, we have a treaty right to decolonize right in and there. Can understand what I'm saying? So since the European states failed to wake up the Moors, specifically France and Spain were supposed to wake up the Moors, they didn't do it. So five years later, after nineteen oh six, the Treaty Affairs of nineteen twelve comes out, okay? We'll make sense of this in just a moment. The Treaty Affairs starts to mandate, the Sultan gave France the mandate to establish a new regime. What does new regime mean? It means a new government instituting new what? Reforms. New processes. Creating substantive law and procedure law, which is the rule of law. How you set up now statutes that now supports the law. What are the statutes supposed to take? What is everybody supposed to do? So the Sultan turns around and tells France to do what is that the Moors were supposed to do. So the Sultan turns around and tells France to do six things. What is the six things in Article one that the Sultan wanted France to do, that the Moors were supposed to do? It told France to set up what? The administration. Set up judicial. Set up education. Set up the economics. Set up what? The financial and military reforms. That's six principles that France was supposed to set up. Why are we studying this? Because we gotta study Treaty Affairs, because the Treaty Affairs was really the mandate that the Moors were supposed to institute. So the Moors was really supposed to set up what? Administrative, judicial, education, economics, financial, and military reforms. Let's go to it from the top, Joseph.
Protectorate Treaty between France and Morocco, signed at Fairs on March thirtieth nineteen twelve. The government of the French Republic and the government of His Sharifian Majesty desires of inauguration and regular regime in Morocco based upon internal order and general security, which will make it possible to introduce reforms and to ensure the economic development of the country have agreed upon the following.
Alright, so what is the country? The country is what? What is the country? Morocco. But Morocco is what? An empire. So France was setting up what? A regular regime to create what? Order. See that? Right here says, "To base upon what? Internal order." So the Empire Morocco was trying to put together a civilized nation for the Moors to start to have what? An organized dual society to create order amongst the Moors and order amongst the Empire Morocco. That's why it says internal. Internal order. What was happening? The Empire Morocco had to clean up its own house first. We have to get our affairs in order first, before we can start getting the colonists in order. So it kinda happens at the same time, but first, you gotta fix your own house. That's what this first paragraph saying. The Sultan's telling France, "Help me get my house in order", and start to work with the Moors, and get the Moors back into the Moors government. So the Moors government becomes an organized dual society again. This is what they were saying in nineteen oh six and nineteen twelve. Now, listen, what, what is, what is, what is it that the Sultan tells France to do? Article one, I'm listening.
Article one. The government of the French Republic and His Majesty the Sultan have agreed to establish in Morocco a new regime comprising the administrative, judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms, which the French government may see fit to introduce within the Moroccan territory.
So therefore, the Sultan is telling France to turn the Empire Morocco into a civilized nation. This is what's happening. To help the Moors to come together, to put the Moors government back together, because we'll read about that too. And France to assist the Moors in governing the Empire Morocco. And the Sultan told France to establish a new regime. A brand-new republic to start to modernize the empire. To get it out of an antiquated status, to bring it up to a what? Civilized nation status. This was happening in nineteen oh six and nineteen twelve. So what France was obligated to do, the Moors were supposed to do, starting in what year? Nineteen oh six. So the Moors were supposed to establish what? A new regime comprising what? Administrative, judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms. Right? Which the French government may see fit to introduce within the Moroccan territory. So let's switch the word French government. Let's replace it with what? Moroccan government or Moors government. It says, let's start from here. So, the Moors was to establish in Morocco a new regime comprising administrative, judicial, educational, economic, financial, and military reforms, which the Moors government may see fit to introduce within the Moroccan territory. You see that? Keep in mind, the Sultan's asking France to do it, because the Moors still hadn't woke up yet, to get their act together, to become an organized dual society. To become what? A civilized nation, to get out of antiquated nomads. The Moors run around like nomads. What's a nomad? Tribes. Moors run around like tribes, and they having tribal wars over territories, instead of getting their act together to come together as an organized dual society. They did not respect the external state. The mother state, the Empire Morocco. You had all the Moors down here running around like nomads and tribes, not respecting the sovereignty of the Empire Morocco. And this is how the empire failed. Because we were infighting, because we didn't want to respect the fact that we have to rise up to become an organized dual society. We were fractionalized. We all split up, going different directions. Fighting over territories, and fighting over taxes, and fighting over this, and fighting over that. It made it easy for the Romans to come in and take us out of office. It made it easy for the colonists to take us out of office, because we too busy infighting. And the whole world was moving forward with establishing external states. And underneath the external states, the Europeans were creating what? Internal states that were governing over who? All the tribes. So the Moors have to learn how to now become a civilized nation to start recognizing the power of the external state, which is what? The Empire of Morocco. And underneath it have internal states, as an example, Empac as an acronym, is an internal state, and not call itself a damn tribe. We're not nomads, we're not tribal people anymore. We gotta grow the hell up. The world's moved on. The, the, the world says, "In order to be civilized nation, you gotta study international law", and international law, international law only recognizes what? States. Article thirty-eight of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice automatically tells you in section one, it's about international law. Section eight says about what? It's about creating what? The rule of law, that all the contesting states recognize the rule. For who? States? Moors run around still talking about tribes. You got these Buddhist black people running around talking about, "Yeah, we gonna create a, a, a Cherokee tribe." Moors running around with moccasins on right now. Moccasins and feathers talking about, "We gonna do this tribal thing." You're going backwards. You're supposed to be moving forward to create a civilized nation. And what's considered a civilized nation under Article thirty-eight of the Statutes of the International Court of Justice? You gotta do what? You gotta become what? A state. That's contemporary international law after nineteen forty-five. But, in nineteen oh six, in nineteen twelve, the Sultan was already trying to establish what? A civilized nation to bring what? Order. To the internal order of the Empire Morocco. Since the Moors still haven't got their act together, the Sultan let France run the show. Because France had what? An organized dual society. The Europeans was putting together an organized dual society. They had consistent principles of laws. They was governing over their citizens with laws. Consistent laws. They have the rule of law, and the practice of law, and the custom of law that was recognized by their state. And they made sure all the internal states followed those same laws. And this is what Moors gotta understand. We gotta understand that the external state and the internal state has to operate like one. But the internal states are just taking care of the local politics. Local politics. Where the small territory, the external state is looking out for what? The entire empire. So this is what Moors gotta understand. That France was given the power of the pen, or should I say, the Sultan was given the power of the pen of sovereignty to France, because the Moors wasn't doing it. You gotta understand what's happening. However, France had a mandate to work with the Moors. Listen.
Last paragraph.
Article one.
This regime shall safeguard the religious status, the respect and traditional prestige of the Sultan, the exercise of the Mahamadian religion, and of all religious institutions, in particular those of the Havius.
Habous.
Habous, excuse me. It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Mothsan.
Alright. So right there, the last sentence, it said, "It", what? What's the it? It shall, what shall? The new regime. The new government. It, "It shall include the organization of a reformed Sharifian Mothsan", so what are they reforming? The Sultan's Mothsan, and what is the Mothsan? The Moors government. So reasons follows. France was supposed to do what? Include the organization of a reformed Moors government. You see that? That was Article one. So France are responsible for six initiatives. To establish a new regime that consists of what? A new what? Administration. A new judicial, right? New what? New education. New what? Economics. New financial, and new military. All new. Because they creating a civilized nation, organized dual society. And they were supposed to do it with who? And reform the Moors government, which is called the Mothsan. And this is why it says Sharifian Mothsan, because Sharifian means what? The Sultan, so it's the Sultan's Moors government. And France didn't wake us up. Guess who else didn't wake us up? The Grand Sheiks. Who talking about they took responsibility of the Moors, and all the thing they did is took the payoff. That's the truth. That's the truth. Who else took the payoff? All the ministers of mosque. Who else took the payoff? Everybody at the NAACP. Who else took the payoff? Everybody at the HBCU. Who else took the payoff? Everybody at BET, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We've been what? Misinformed, and when you misinformed, you use what? The applications of misinformation. So you start calling yourself what? Black, because you was informed that you was black. So now you trying to apply what? Your blackism. And then your blackism calls a causation and effect, a cause and effect. Because you call yourself black because someone informed you that you was black, they miseducate you. Then the Moors turn around and say, oh, I'm gonna put on a fad. We gonna call our people on the information, Moors Americans. That's misinformation. So that misinformation transferred to the application of some misinformation of the Moors science, especially the civic Moors. Who became sovereign citizens because they say they don't come under jurisdiction of their adopted mother. So that misinformation and the application of misinformation created causation and effect, cause and effect. Of the Moors going to jail and having warrants. And being put out of their houses and now they're squatting or they're just simply homeless. However, when you follow the instructions of treaties and international law. It puts you in the proper status of information, the proper information, and the proper application creates causation and effect. The cause and effect is based on what? A proper what? Legal argument. Because now you get a proper what? Legal personality. Because you know the name of the state, and you know the name of the nationality, you following the instructions of international law. And you following the instructions of your Treaty of Madrid, article fifteen, paragraph one. Listen, speaking of repatriation. Today is the fourth of July, which is Independence Day for the United States of America. Keep in mind, now the United States Constitution took over in eighteen seventy-one. So it's really the United States Constitution. The United States is still using the Stars and Stripes flag of the United States of America. So it's the United States operating on behalf of the United States of America. Two legal personalities. You have the United States as a legal personality, as what? An intergovernmental organization or municipal corporation, i.e. federal corporation. Is operating as a power attorney or representative or trustee on behalf of what? The United States of America, because United States, United States of America is void of a government. It's absent. It's hollow. Right? So since the United States is now operating on behalf of the United States of America, the United States still flies the Stars and Stripes. And then on Independence Day, they fly their flag proudly as patriots of their mother country. Okay, speaking of patriotism, let's look at the border, the, the string. Where's the Moors' mother flag of the Empire Morocco? Well, here it is. Who had to establish it? The Moors, by the free will of the people, have to establish a flag that represents their mother. Because when you repatriate, now you have to have patriotism of your mother. And how you have patriotism of her? You fly your mother's flag. And this is the flag of the mother state called the Empire of Morocco. So on our Independence Day of Moroccans, and which we'll talk about that some other day, what is the true, true, true Independence Day of Morocco? We'll talk about that another day. But on our day, just like the United States of America has Fourth of July, the Empire Morocco also have its day when we do what? We bring out our flag, right? We wave our flag, right? All day. Under patriotism of what? Our mother. This is what's happening, we coming back home. But you gotta understand, what does the flag really represent? It represents the nation. What does nation mean? That's the state and the people becoming one. That's what nation means. The state and the people come together on the constitution and the flag represents the nation of people. And the flag represents the state. It represents both legal personalities. What's the first legal personality? The state. What's the name of the state? Empire Morocco. What's the second legal personality? The people. What's their nationality? Moroccan. So both the state and the people become one. It's called, we the people have a flag that represents the people and a flag that represents the state. So therefore, that one flag represents both legal personalities. Okay, listen, what is this? This is the Kingdom of Morocco's flag. So the Kingdom of Morocco, that's over in Africa. Because that's the proper legal personality, called the Kingdom of Morocco. That's a legal personality. What's their nationality? Moroccans. That's a legal personality according to what? Okay, listen. According to what? This is the preamble of the constitution of the Kingdom of Morocco, right? Kingdom of Morocco. The preamble of their constitution for the King Morocco is a legal personality. Right? And they call themselves what? Listen, look at what they said. They are what? A modern state. That's in their preamble. They're a modern state. They ain't saying they're an ancient state, are they? They say they're modern, why? Because they ain't no such thing as King Morocco until nineteen fifty-six. When they became a member state of the United Nations in November of nineteen fifty-six. So when I tell Moors that the Sultan stepped down in nineteen fifty-six, why do I say the Sultan stepped down in nineteen fifty-six? Because first of all, first of all, he signed an agreement on March second nineteen fifty-six with France. And then he became a member state of the Kingdom of Morocco in November of nineteen fifty-six. So right then and there, because of the agreements that Mohammed the Fifth had with the, with France, Mohammed the Fifth already agreed to do what? Step down. That was the only way he could be recognized as a member state of a new what? A new what? Modern state. Because France didn't want Mohammed the Fifth to get the sovereign power and the sovereign authorities being Sultan. Because Mohammed the Fifth would have did something to France. You understand what's happening? So now the King Morocco is a brand new player on an international level, starting in nineteen fifty-six. They're not an ancient state. So listen, what do I have up here? This is two states. This is Vietnam. You got North Vietnam, you got South Vietnam. What's their nationality? Vietnamese. The North Vietnamese and South Vietnamese, even though they're two separate states. But they got the same nationality. So the world recognizes North Vietnam and the world recognizes South Vietnam, two separate states. But both claiming the same nationality. You see? So why am I bringing this to the attention of the Moors? It's because we got two separate states. One state is called what? Empire Morocco. Listen. One state is called what? Empire Morocco. That's one state. What's the nationality of the people? Moroccan. Then there's what? King Morocco. Kingdom of Morocco. That's a modern state, right? The Kingdom of Morocco became a modern state in nineteen fifty-six. Separate state, same nationality, Moroccan. So there's two separate states. That are calling themselves what? An external state. They have the same nationality. One's an empire, one's a kingdom. One is what? As an example, listen. One is like this. One is North Vietnam, one is South Vietnam. If this was the same equation for the Moors, one would be what? Empire Morocco, that would be Kingdom of Morocco. You see what I'm saying? But they both have a right to exist. Because the King Morocco is telling you in their constitution off the top, this is their constitution of the year twenty eleven, by the way, twenty eleven. That they're a modern state. But everybody on planet Earth who knows anything about Morocco knows Morocco's an ancient state. So therefore, the Empire Morocco. Empire Morocco is the mother state, but yet the King Morocco does have a right to exist. Why? Because the Kingdom of Morocco, go back to the constitution. You won't find nowhere in their constitution where they recognize themselves as what? Moors. They say they're Moroccans. They never say that they are Moors. They never say that they're Moors. They keep saying they're what? Arabs. So the Arabs are calling themselves Moroccans. But if Moors call themselves Moors, we too are Moroccans because the Arabs did what? Under conquest, they settled in our territory of the Moors Empire. They know that they are what? Immigrants with an E, who sought what? Permanent residence in the Moors Empire. They know that that's not their original homeland, this is why they keep referring themselves as Arabs to remind themselves they came from where? Arabia. So therefore, the Moors, as soon as you wake up one day and say, I'm a Moor, guess what that triggers automatically? The Moors treaties. So therefore, the Moors treaty, the Moors had a mandate to return to what? Morocco, but Morocco's an empire. You have to follow the instructions of the treaty. Soon as you say you're Moor, A, they gave you a right to your Moroccan nationality, go back to the treaty. I'm gonna make sense of this. Treaty of Madrid eighteen eighty, right? We go to the footnotes. What is it that the United States and the Kingdom of Morocco knows about you? What is it that they were trying to stop you from doing? They didn't want you to enforce what? Your nationality, because you're the original inhabitant of the land, you're indigenous. So the United States was trying to coerce Mohammed the Fifth to say that the Moors wasn't Moroccans. But even Mohammed the Fifth and the people over the King Morocco keep saying that they're what? Arabs. So if they keep saying they're Arabs and they turn around and say the Moors aren't Moroccans, that's somewhat a what? Crime against humanity, that's genocide, paper genocide. To turn around and it's cheap and hypothesize the Moors sovereign rights to be the Moors government and the Moroccans again. So what did the United States do in their attempt to commit genocide, paper genocide? What did Mohammed the Fifth do allegedly through the Kingdom of Morocco in nineteen fifty-eight? It starts to try and remove the Moors' rights to their what? Moroccan nationality. This is in the small print of the footnote, the, the bottom, right? And the footer talks about Moroccan nationality. We're gonna go over this again, being redundant, because we're talking about why did the Moors need a constitution for the Empire Morocco? It's because the constitution, right? The constitution does what? The constitution starts to recognize the name of the state and it starts to recognize the what? The nationality, which is what? What's the nationality? Moroccan. That's what the constitution does. It declares to the world who you are and it declares the name of the state. Because you're granting, because the United Nations granting independence to who? The colonial state, right? Which is what? Morocco. That's the colonial state that was colonized and it's the granting of independence to who? The people, which is Moroccans. But what did Mohammed the Fifth and the United States try to do in nineteen fifty-eight? Well, let's learn about it. Okay. Nova.
A U.S. note of March seventeenth of nineteen fifty-nine, addressed to the Moroccan Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Referred to a note from the ministry dated October eighth of nineteen fifty-eight. In which the embassy had been informed that the Moroccan government had decided to strike all prescriptions relating to Moroccan nationality. From the text of the Madrid Convention. The United States note said, in part, in quotes. "The government of the United States of America, having unilaterally relinquished certain rights in Morocco. With the reemergence of Morocco into independence in nineteen fifty-six. Considers that in line with historical developments of article fifteen of the Madrid Convention on Protection of eighteen eighty has become obsolete and without effect." "The government of the United States takes due cognizance, therefore, of the action taken by the Moroccan government. As set forth in this above cited note. Which the United States government understands to refer only to article fifteen of the Madrid Convention on Protection of eighteen eighty."
Alright, so the United States and Mohammed the Fifth of the Kingdom of Morocco, which was a modern state. Was trying to strip the Moors of their Moroccan nationality according to article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid. Because Mohammed the Fifth and the United States do their article fifteen is what? The article fifteen is what? The portal, right? The portal that allows the Moors to come back home like Dora. It was a treaty right, a treaty supreme law of the land. So what did the Moors do? The Moors still have a human right, right? The Moors have a human right according to the Charter, right? The Charter of the United Nations of nineteen forty-five, article one, section two. Article fifty-five and article seventy-three gave the Moors a human right to do what? Declare their self-determination to say that they are Moors, i.e. Moroccans, and return back to Morocco. That's what the Charter of the United Nations set up as substantive law and procedural law. But the Moors themselves have to do what? They have to declare and put together a constitution. The constitution does the declaration for you is the properly written instrument that starts you to what? Give you back your own rights. So through the constitution, the Moors need a constitution to recognize the state, to not recognize the nationality of Moroccan. And to recognize the Moors government and to recognize the national flag of the Empire of Morocco for Moors. To set up the proper legal personality. So therefore, the Moors had to establish a national flag. For the Empire of Morocco. This is your mother's flag. That you can come back and pledge your allegiance to this flag of your mother, your biological mother. But instead, what are the Moors doing? Okay, listen. We gotta talk about this, I know Moors are sensitive, but we gotta talk about this. The Moors are waving a flag of the Kingdom of Morocco. They waving it proudly. And the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution doesn't even recognize any Moors whatsoever. And the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution, if you go down to article four. What does article four say, brother Joseph?
Article four. "The emblem of the state is the red flag stamped in its center with the green star of five points branches."
Uh huh. Pause. Article four of the Kingdom of Morocco's constitution is making a legal claim. A legal personality of the constitution is claiming this red flag stamped in its center with a green star. That's the Kingdom of Morocco's flag of the national state called the Kingdom of Morocco, that's a modern state. And Moors are waving the Kingdom of Morocco's flag and the Kingdom has laid claim to that flag. Why? Because they're what? Arabs who are calling themselves Moroccans and now they creating a two-state. Two states. One is the Kingdom for Arabs and one is the Empire for who? Moors. And the Moors are originally what? Moroccans. And this is why every time you look in European history, all you see is the word Moorish and Moor everywhere. Because they know the Moors, who are the Moroccans, that they refer to as Moorish are their indigenous, original inhabitants of the land and not the Arabs. So you gotta understand, listen. When you keep waving the Kingdom of Morocco's flag, you know what you telling the whole world? First of all, you got your ignorance. First of all, you got your ignorance on display. Because now they know you haven't even read the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution. You don't know nothing about Article four of the Kingdom of Morocco's Constitution. You don't know that King Morocco doesn't recognize Moors whatsoever. You won't read in their constitution say anything about the empire, you won't find the word Sultan, and you won't find the word Moor, because these are proper legal personalities. I'm talking, being specific, I'm being particular. What's the name of the people that, natural inhabitants? They're what? Moors, but Moors abbreviation of what? Moroccan. You won't find the word Moor or Moorish in the Kingdom Morocco's Constitution. So therefore, this flag don't provide you any political protections whatsoever because this flag don't represent you, it don't recognize you as Moors. Why? Because you're still adopted of the United States of America and all the other European states. So you're supposed to be waving one flag, the Star of Stripes. That's your adopted mother's flag. But since she abused you, you ran away like a little child, and you ran into the Twilight Zone. Because your Moors American teachers never told you about what? The Moors Treaties. Because the Moors Treaties, Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, were told you just simply return to Morocco instead of going into the desert with Moses. So you gotta stop waving the United States of America's flag. And you gotta stop waving in the Twilight Zone the Kingdom of Morocco's flag that don't recognize you. And you gotta start waving your mother's flag of the Empire Morocco. There it is. You gotta have patriotism. Just like the United States of America, here's their constitution, they got patriotism of their states. They're proud Americans. They're proud of the Moors, you're not proud Moroccans, because you've been miseducated. You're supposed to understand that this flag now is starting to represent you. This is your mother's flag. You say, oh man, we don't, we don't recognize that flag. I got no problem with that, because guess what? You still call yourself Moorish American, therefore, you're still what? American. So this is why you don't recognize this is your mother's flag, because you still keep recognizing your adopted mother's flag as the United States of America. And then you fraudulently keep flying a flag of the Kingdom of Morocco, but the Kingdom of Morocco has separated itself from the empire. So therefore, the King Morocco's flag only represents the Moroccans within the territory of the Kingdom of Morocco. And none of the Moors Americans have ever filled out an application to become a citizen of the Kingdom of Morocco, but yet they keep flying the flag of the Kingdom of Morocco. Talking about this, a Moorish flag is not a Moorish flag. This is a Moorish flag, this is your mother's flag, this is the national flag of the external sovereign state of the empire. You keep flying the flag of the kingdom. Which is a modern state. And we are not a modern people, we are ancient people, we're the Moors of planet Earth. Our Moorish buildings are all over planet Earth, all these megalithic buildings are everywhere. They all got the same structure everywhere on planet Earth. Our footprint is everywhere on planet Earth. And what do we do? We reduce ourselves to a small territory called the Kingdom of Morocco. When you wave the Kingdom Morocco's flag, you reduce your entire history to a small territory called the Kingdom, which is a modern state. And we are ancient people, and this is considered a new ancient flag. This represents the Moors, it may be a new flag under a new regime, but this flag represents an ancient people. This is what we gotta understand. Stop waving a flag of the colonists of the United States of America. Stop waving a flag of the King Morocco, that's a modern state for Arabs. And that's no disrespect to Arabs. I'm just telling the truth, because their constitution says they're a modern state of Arabs. Who now proclaim themselves as Moroccans, but they don't say they're Moors. It was the obligation of Moors to enforce their own treaties, because all the treaties keep referring to the legal personality of the people as being what? Moorish. Not Arab. Can you understand this? This is your mother's flag. Just a moment. Get my mama straightened out, here. My mama's flag. Okay, mama, thank you very much. Okay, Moors, listen. As I start to close out. What should we take away from this? We just simply have to follow the instructions of international law. And follow the instructions of our own Moors Treaties. You must understand, this is a very powerful title. Repatriation destroys colonization. Therefore, this whole movement is about decolonization. But how do you decolonize? You gotta do what? Repatriate. You gotta get out of the United States of America's jurisdiction, and you certainly gotta get out of the Twilight Zone. You have a treaty right, a human right, a peremptory right, a just cogent right to return to your mama. But what was the problem? There was no government to return to. We had to reestablish it. This is why the United Nations Resolution fifteen forty-one of nineteen sixty-one, Principle Number Six, gave the Moors three options. And we should, you choose option number one, it says what? Emergence as a sovereign independent state, that where we can come home to our mother. This is what the Moors have to take away from Class one forty-eight. We'll continue moving forward to talk about why we needed a constitution for the Empire Morocco. We gotta start understanding, once we have a constitution for the Empire Morocco, now we can start to enforce the fact that the United States of America, as an example, owes the Empire Morocco what? Taxes. I ain't with that. Islam.
Islam.